What do you think about those protocols? Yeah, that's my team. Um, good morning. We're gonna call to order the December second, twenty twenty five Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Um, I'll take the roll call. Um, Barry?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Cory?
Here.
Beau?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
The next item of business is time to reorganize the board. I'm gonna call for nominations for chairman. Do I have any nominations for chairman?
I nominate Cory Hanson for chair.
I have a nomination for Cory Hanson for chair. Any other nomination?
All second and cast a ballot, unanimous ballot for Cory Hanson for chair.
Blah, 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 blah. Um, okay, roll call. Uh, Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes. Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, my glory's done.
Thanks, Beth. Uh, now, we're gonna have to, uh, look for a nomination for the vice chair.
I'd nominate Beau Anderson, if he'd be willing.
Okay, so we have a nomination for vice chair. Any other nominations?
I would second and move for unanimous vote.
Okay, perfect. We have a second and a motion for a unanimous ballot. Beth, take roll, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you, guys. Or darn you, guys. One or the other. I don't know which one it is. Okay, uh, if everybody please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, that brings the consent agenda. What are the wishes?
Mister Chairman, I'd move to approve the consent agenda presented this morning.
Thank you. Is there a second? All second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item D is public comment. This is the spot on the agenda for anybody that wishes to address the board that doesn't, isn't currently on the agenda. Is there anyone here for public comment? Anyone here for public comment? I thought maybe Brenda was gonna beat you to it. She came just in time.
I was wondering. Wanting to question your spot board. Um, I have spoken with some of you and, uh, this goes back a ways, I guess, in my, trying to understand some of the ETJ rulings and, um, I got an email that Karen kinda went with what some of the century, uh, codes refer to as far as what, what upholds and such, but I guess in my mind, it just seems a little bit, uh, strange that living, residing within the ETJ areas, as I do, and some of the city rules and ordinances apply to those within. And there's really no mechanism for a vote for any of those, um, city commissioners that actually do rule on the ordinances and such. Now, they claim there is representation through the planning and zoning boards, uh, which I sit on the city, planning and zoning, representing the ETJ. One of three that reside in the ETJ. So with that, I mean, it is a very small, if very ineffective, I think, um, form of representation for those residents. Within the last month or so, I think Bismarck did pull back some of their ETJ territory that they, um, were basically that the city was, was ruling over. And I think that impacted close to about ninety-five percent of the residents. Because I think they were having similar, uh, issues there, too. Minot, um, there's some residents outside of the city boundaries of Minot, Fargo. So currently, I sit as the state president of the, uh, State Builders Association. So of our six associations, um, Fargo, Grand Forks, Minot, Bismarck, Dickinson, Williston, four of the six have concerns of, of how the ETJ is actually, um, implemented over their, over their areas and with the representation. So I just wanted to, uh, make note of that and bring it up and to have it on the minutes and stuff, and I think there'd be some further discussion that I would like to maybe have at another time. And just in regards to that, the representation of those residents within those areas. I know the city is, is, uh, looking at some of the ordinances that have been kind of an issue that we've brought up, but I do believe that there's, there's several layers, I think, that need to be looked at and addressed. Now, whether we, between the the county board and the city board, and I do know there is a committee that, that works on some of that stuff. But I think it would be helpful to have some representation or some other seats at those meetings just to hear what some of the residents, I guess, are kinda concerned about. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Appreciate it. All right, any other public comment? No, seeing none, we will move on. Uh, looks like we have a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing. The, uh, this is City of Tioga objections to minimum bid price set. Uh, Hyrum Zitting Parcels. So are there any comments? Does anyone want to address the board? Second time, any objections? And, uh, third time, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Uh, and what do we need? We need a motion to approve the, uh, minimum bid price?
No.
I got a yes and a no. So which one am I believing? We did?
Yeah, you don't need to do anything.
Okay, thank you very much. We can move on. I love to hear that. Item F, planning and zoning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michelle with Planning and Zoning. This morning, we have LU dash zero zero eight five dash two five, which is Dallas Lalum, who's requesting a zone change to the agricultural zoning district and then a conditional use permit to construct a water intake pumping station. This is located in sub lot six of the north half of the southwest of section sixteen, township one fifty-four north, range ninety-six west, being Houghland Township. Um, with Houghland Township being governed by Williams County, no township comment was solicited on this item. The applicant is requesting a zone change to the agricultural zoning district for an approximately ten point ten acre parcel. Subject property is currently within the rural residential zoning district. The land was originally platted in two thousand and three and being zoned as residential and later rezoned to rural residential as part of the countywide zoning update. Within the Williams County zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations, an industrial pumping station is only allowable within, with a conditional use permit within the agricultural, light industrial, and heavy industrial zoning districts. With the location of this subject property, it was determined the agricultural zoning district was the most appropriate. The applicant is also requesting the conditional use permit, which would allow them to construct a water intake pumping station. The applicant was approved for a conditional water permit number seven zero two six in two thousand and eighteen with an expiration date of March one of two thousand and twenty-five. If if the water was not beneficially used on or before that date. In March of two thousand and twenty-four, the applicant was issued an extension of that water permit for beneficial use until March one of two thousand and thirty. Since being granted the extension, the applicant has acquired an HDPE stress analysis and hydrofracture analysis. Detailed plans have also been acquired to assist in the permitting processes. The purpose of the water intake pumping station is to expand the existing industry and will allow for additional industrial water opportunities within the area. Access to the subject property is off of a private road, taken off of one hundred ninth Avenue Northwest. Planning and zoning commission did hear this item on Thursday, November twentieth, and recommended approval with a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Uh, do you have anything to add? Please introduce yourself for the record.
Uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, I'm Garrett Lalum with, uh, with Hardy Water. Uh, Dallas, he'll be walking in probably any minute here. The, he didn't quite leave in time this morning. Um, I guess, uh, most of you are probably aware, we've, uh, we've been in the water business down in Houghland since, I think, two thousand eight possibly. Uh, in two thousand, I think, fourteen, we moved up to the highway on eighteen oh four where we built our, our hot water facility. And then in two thousand and eighteen, uh, we, we started having discussions, uh, you know, with the Corps as far as, uh, getting, uh, an easement to put an intake into the lake due to basically the Houghland Aquifer. They're really not, they're not allowing any more permits in there. So that kinda got stalled out. Uh, COVID came around and basically we're back, uh, back starting it here again. Your turn.
Yeah. After planning and zoning, I told my son, you answer all the questions, not me. I think it's an age thing, so you're doing good. Roads weren't so good coming in, so.
So, uh, it's been, I think, probably around a year and a half ago, uh, we've been working with the Corps. It took just about a year for us to get, uh, the permits to do the, the geotech boring. So, so the engineers could actually design that, you know, the, the bore for the intake. Uh, right now, we've got that done. And they, and we're basically at a sixty percent design for the, for the Corps of Engineers. Moving forward now, we're working on, uh, on the, uh, permitting with them as far as the four oh fours, four oh eights. It's quite an extensive process to gain easement from the Corps to install an intake like this. So that's basically where we're at. Um, we come to the conclusion that the Corps is probably gonna say, hey, do you guys have any support from the county? So we decided to get on that, you know, right away here, get in front of you guys, work on that. That way, that's already in place for them when they, uh, when they, as they're working on this stuff. So that's, uh, that's basically where we're at on it right now as far as the permitting process.
So, so how far out, um, does that intake go into the lake?
I think, uh, she's got all the, the, the sixty percent diagrams. I wanna say from our corner of the property, it's roughly around five hundred and fifty yards out to water that's, that's deep enough to facilitate an intake like this.
And is it bored all the way out that way, or do you dig it in?
It's, it's bored all the way out from our, from the edge of our property.
Okay.
Yep, so.
And the reason I'm asking, obviously, is, uh, there's a park right there.
Correct. Yep, yep.
So I just wanted to make sure that was on the record of.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
And we had, we had to get it to deep enough water, you know, to make sure that that down the road that we got water. So that's where, that's where we had to go that far, we felt, to get to where we're, we're, we feel pretty comfortable.
Yeah, because Missouri needs the water, too. Sorry, that's just a little dig at, uh, the Corps there. Just one question, um, the I assume the water's for industrial use for, for fracking, whatnot? For oil field, or is it just for, is it for irrigation, or?
Go ahead.
Well, I guess is what our intent here is, is, is future needs for, uh, for the area. You know, we've got, we've got the oil, we've got the gas, we got the electricity. I, we believe that there's probably gonna be, uh, you know, some development that's possibly gonna happen within the near future, and that water is basically the, the fourth key to that. So we're trying to stay ahead of that. That way, when the, when, when these people that come to the area looking to do their projects, it's already set in place, so they don't have to wait X amount of years to try to get that, that resource.
The, the only reason I was asking is because the parks right there, would, would it be an option to, to buy water from you to irrigate the park, for example?
I I, I would assume, yeah, probably, uh, between, between this and then also, uh, uh, the other industrial permits down there.
Okay, that, it was just looking ahead. I don't know if Jeremy's looking to irrigate that park or not, but, uh, it would be, I'm assuming it's just raw water. It's not treated water. You're not gonna treat it.
Correct. We won't do that. This, this'll be an, an intake that'll disperse from here and go whichever direction that it, that it might need to, depending on, on end users.
Perfect.
And with the, the size of the pumps you have, you could probably just put a sprinkler at yours and do the whole park with one sprinkler. From the looks of it, so. Any other questions?
Mister Lealum, I'm just concerned about aesthetics to the area and, uh, any noise abatement or anything like that.
Okay, yeah, so, so the building that, uh, that the, uh, that the pumps and electric motors will be housed in is, I, I don't, do you remember the dimensions on that? It's not, it's not real large. It's
About the size of a double garage.
It's, yeah. Twenty-eight.
Sixteen by twenty-eight, I believe.
So it'll, it'll all be controlled by electric motors. And our engineers, yeah, they did say that, you know, we'll, we can design to code whatever it needs to be, you know, for any noise, but it will be completely electric.
Okay, any, uh, other questions? Okay, you guys have anything to add, or we'll be ready to turn it over to the board? Okay.
If you have any other questions, yeah, just let us know.
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. We will, uh, turn this over to the board. What, uh, what are the wishes?
Mister Chairman, I'd move to approve LU dash zero zero eight five dash two five for Dallas Lealum.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Moved and seconded.
For, for, just for discussion, I'd spoke with, uh, Dallas earlier, so on, um, number three, where it's there, um, to get the building permits, could that be contingent on the Corps' approval to begin with? Right, I mean, or, you know, to, there's no point in having them do that, and if, for some reason down the road, the Corps goes, well, we don't like this idea, well then, you know.
Um, I, if you would be willing to amend your motion.
Yes, I would amend it to be conditional upon Corps approval.
Okay, and you'll amend your second?
I would, too, yes.
Okay, and now is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none. You got the, you got the motion down, Beth? You do? Okay, let's do a roll call.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Quick planning and zoning today. Holy smokes. And now we're gonna put the pressure on Beth trying to write, and number one, the auditor is up.
Okay, the first thing I have for you this morning, and I have Sheila back behind me in case I, I need any other help. We were tasked with the, um, chore to look and see if we could have another polling location um, in Legislative District number twenty-three. We've checked all over the place, and we finally came up with the Ernie French Center. They have agreed to be a polling location for us in the upcoming elections. So as far as we know, it'll be continuous from here on out until either we de- decide to change it, or they say we can't have the place anymore. So that is one of the things that I need you to, um, approve today, as well as I need you to approve the establishment of the precincts and polling locations for the two thousand and twenty-six election cycle per North Dakota Century Code sixteen point one oh four, sixteen point one oh seven, and sixteen point one eleven point eleven, uh, one. We have to do this every year. Then we have an election coming up.
And you'll want, uh, a motion to approve both of those and authorize the chairman to sign?
Ex, yes.
Yes, and, uh, the only thing I'd like to point out is, uh, Beth did go out and talk to several places, uh, even further to the west, and it just, it wasn't gonna work out, uh, to, to go further there. So Ernie French was kinda the, the furthest out, but, uh, I mean, that's gonna save those folks a lot of time. Might have to drive all the way through town.
Well, and, and if you look, there's an election map behind you. The people that we're gonna have vote at the Ernie French Center will be that, um, pretty purple color, precinct number fourteen. And then we'll also have precinct number twelve, which is that pink color right up above it, that light pink color. And we'll have precincts number twenty, which is that green, and precinct number twenty-two right there. So all those people in that area will be able to go to the Ernie French Center. And if they don't wanna go there, they still can go to the vote centers, which is at the Ark and the Fairgrounds. So it's kind of like a win-win for those people, if you wanna call it that.
Okay, so what are the wishes of the board?
Mister Chairman, I'd move to approve the precinct polling locations and the Ernie French Center in addition to the existing.
And authorize the chairman to sign?
Yes.
All second that. Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried. And I think it's still you. You got a whole list of stuff there, don't you?
Okay. The first two, the Stacy Cook and the Hyrum Zitting, those are two repurchases that we had prior to the sale um, in November. So we need to have that, um, two repurchases and deeds moved and seconded. Can I do them all together?
Both of them?
Well, and the other ones from the sale?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
And then the other one after that, Aaron Sexton. He, uh, bought a parcel in Williston, just down the street from here at the tax sale. And he paid, hang on. Brenda? He paid forty-five thousand dollars for the parcel, if I recall right. And then Lance Quandie, he is now the owner of App Am. He bought the last parcels there in App Am, and he paid a thousand dollars for the parcel that was right next beside him. And so we have those. If you would make a motion for the chairman to sign the repurchase and the deeds, and the tax sale deeds.
Okay, what are the wishes?
I'd make a motion to approve the repurchase of, or the purchase of these deeds in whole. Can we do them all as one, I'm assuming? Okay?
And authorize?
And authorize the chairman to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Can I get a roll call?
Yes. Uh, Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, the next thing that we have, we did have an issue at the tax sale, just like we did last year. We had an individual that bought a parcel for fifty thousand dollars in the city of Tioga. He did not come back that day and pay for it. Um, currently, we would like to take some action so that people can't do that to us anymore. Um, I told Brenda she can't have the tax sale anymore because it's twice now. And so there's a letter, there's a, um, document inside your packets today that, um, has Century Code law on it. And then there's also a couple things that we are requesting that, um, you look at and the amount of money that we're requesting for them to pay. And it says that we can have a contract with them, which is like a contract for deed, but I really don't wanna do a contract for deed over a period of time. I just want the contract for deed to be a sign that they sign it stating that at the end of Business Day, the day of the sale, that they will have us the money there. Karen has looked at all this, too, by the way. Um, she's the one that gave us all this information and stuff. Oops.
I, I, I gave the auditor's office information, but I have no idea what document that she's given to you to look at, so.
So what exactly is that you're asking for, Beth? What do you, what do you want?
What we would like to do is we would like to have some type of a motion by the board recommending to have the bidder pay the minimum bid price. So at least we'll have the taxes covered, so they'll pay the minimum bid price at the sale that day. The minute they buy it, they can bring a check with them, and they pay us, like, if the bid price is three thousand dollars, they give us a check right there that time for three thousand dollars, so at least have the taxes paid. If they bought the parcel for ten thousand dollars, they give us the three. If we're out to seven thousand dollars, that isn't a big deal. It is, but it's not because the proceeds over the price goes to the former owners or relative or whatever of the former owner. So we would like you to have that, um, that they pay that minimum bid price.
Okay, I understand that. But then if, if they don't come with a check, they can't buy the parcel?
Nope.
So then you're gonna do, you're gonna, you're gonna auction off one parcel and say, okay, Mister Kemp, you need to come up and write a check before we go to the next parcel.
And, and that's something that the people have a problem with. They say, well, I didn't bring any money. I didn't know how much this parcel was going for. I need to go to my bank and get the money. Well, this way, when the people come to the sale, they'll know that if I'm selling parcel number one, it's a thousand dollars. That's the minimum bid price that you, that we can have for this parcel. So if it sells for ten thousand dollars, at least I have the one thousand dollars, the minimum bid price that that parcel is going for.
I- is there a way to set this up and, and my, here's my thoughts. We have time. Can, can you get back with Karen and come up with how this actually needs to be worded? I think I understand what you're saying, but we gotta make sure we do it legal.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I, I get it. But if you guys can go back, come up with a, a plan of how you, maybe when they get their bidder number, I don't know, but they sign something that way and then bring it back to us when we're a little further along? Is that okay with, is that okay with the board?
Well, yes, it is, but I guess I, um, I've not been to the tax sales, but, you know, been to plenty enough auction sales. You, you pay, you settle there.
Yeah, that was my question. Why are they not settling, settling before they leave?
Because we do not accept personal checks. They have to have a cashier's check or a bank draft or whatever, or cash. We don't take personal checks. The reason some of these parcels are being repurchased is because one gentleman gave us a personal check. We took it to the treasurer's office, and the check bounced. And so that's one of the parcels that were, that was repurchased today. That's the reason why, his check bounced. So if we're selling somebody something at the tax sale, their check bounces, then what? They don't own the property, and the same with this, this parcel that we have today that we didn't sell at the, um, sale. I'm gonna ask for you guys to let me sell it um, by sealed bids. So that's the problem. We don't accept checks.
Well, and I guess I, me, in my way of thinking, I, I agree with you guys, 'cause I've been, because one check bounced shouldn't be why we don't accept checks. It happens. Now, I would bet you have a whole pile that do go through, and it's fine. So, I mean, I, so to me, really, this is our fault because the guy can't bring a certified check from the bank. He has to go to the bank. So now you're saying we gotta solve a problem that we created. So why don't you guys take it, get it figured out, and come back, and then we can talk about it and, and go from there.
Okay, the other thing, this property that was in the city of Tioga, can we have permission to put this on, um, and advertise for bid? And sell it?
Is it legal?
Yes, it is.
I believe we have a different opinion. I believe we have a different opinion.
Yeah, we can sell it by sealed bid or a public auction. We did that to some property, uh, tax foreclosure property that didn't sell back in Trenton Township, I think, cir- a couple of years ago, so, yeah. But we would sell it, we would advertise it at the minimum bid price though, really, so.
Okay.
So.
So what are the wishes of the board?
I would make a motion to allow the auditor's office to advertise for sealed bids on the property in Tioga.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried. Good there. All right, let's move on. Looks like, uh, it's up to Helen.
Good morning. All right, you'll see on the position report, there's, it's there for your reference, but we don't have any action to take. There are a whole bunch of interviews and, and we're making some job offers this week. And so the list of positions we're recruiting will go down, but we don't have any open positions right now that you haven't already approved. So I'll jump on to the next thing, which is the Back the Blue program. So the twenty, in the twenty-twenty-five legislative session, the legislature approved money that really duplicates a program that happened in the previous session, which is money intended for retention and recruitment of law enforcement officers. So it would be licensed peace officers, licensed corrections officers, and the types of positions that they occupy. So each jurisdiction that employs those, those kinds of licensed folks gets money based on a calculation factor that they have. And then each jurisdiction is asked to come up with a program that they would use to, um, get those dollars out to the eligible folks. So the, for, for example, the city of Williston got this money and a few weeks or months ago, uh, did some kind of a, a bonus retention program. Uh, the sheriff is here, but we had some conversations, he and I, and, and our HR director. And we are duplicating really the program that we used two years ago. There's a tiered system in which, uh, a larger portion of this money goes to the more entry level positions, the folks who are working the rotating shifts, either on the floor in the jail or, or out on patrol. And then while our, our senior members of management who are licensed get, get, um, a, a smaller than portion of a bonus. The, the thing that we did last year that we would ask your, or last two years ago, that we would ask your permission to do again is to allocate a little bit of our own money to provide a similar, uh, payment or similar bonus to folks in the sheriff's office who wouldn't qualify under this program. And so non-licensed folks, we have a, a, a couple handfuls worth of those folks, but we think they're critical to what happens. The, the people who are targeted by the legislative program couldn't do their work, couldn't be effective in what they were doing without the other folks in the department there helping. And then we'd like to extend this program to dispatch as well. We, we are one of, I think, seven local agency, local organizations that have a, that operate a dispatch center. And we certainly know that the work of all these other individuals couldn't happen if, if dispatchers weren't there taking the phone calls in and sending out first responders. And so you'll see on the, on the memo that I provided, there's a little screenshot of the, of the beginning of the letter we got from, it's actually the Attorney General's Office that, that administers these state funds. And so a little note from, from what they provided us. And then the proposed program expansion includes just under thirty thousand dollars. That includes us covering the taxes for all of the money and, and those little allocations out to dispatch and the other staff in the sheriff's office. We do have money in dispatch, in the dispatch budget and the SO budget to cover these expenses.
Okay, is there any questions? Well, I think it sounds like a great program and for us to be, that, that's not a huge amount of money and hopefully it'll help because, uh, you're right, there are folks that get forgot about. So I'm, I'm definitely in favor of it. Is there, uh, is there any, uh, anybody'd like to make a motion?
Move to approve, Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Great, we have two contracts or agreements for you to sign. One is with Proud City. That's the company we use to create our website or our websites. So it's just an expansion and, and it really an add-on so that we can create that fairgrounds website that we've been talking about. It, it will be its own bundle and we will provide information there, links to the various clubs and groups that use the fairgrounds, and then of course, some of our own information. But, uh, it will have its own, it won't be WilliamsND.com. It'll be, I don't know, Williams Fairgrounds or something. I think Lindsay's working on that. So, so I do need the contract signed and then we will expand. You see, there's a little money associated with that. Christie and I do plan to work in the month of, in the next couple of weeks to get a fairgrounds budget together, which will, which will come forward to you in budget discussions as, as a amendment to the overall twenty-sixth budget. So this will get paid out of that.
And then this will just be hooked to our website?
Correct. Yep, yep. It'll be, it will be seamless, but it does allow us to have its own, you know, can have its own look, can have its own, um, address, have a little autonomy. And as we do more out there, I think it'll make sense for people. As the community continues to know that there are cool things happening there, to have a place to go and see that will be nice.
And is it? There's two prices we're paying here, right?
Yes.
Onboarding price and the subscription.
So we pay an initiation. They gotta set it up, get us going, do all of that. And then there's an, then there's an ongoing fee.
Okay, any questions? What are the wishes?
Move to approve the Proud City Terms of Service and authorize the chairman to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
All right, then you have a J E Dunn contract. They were awarded, they, they were actually the only bidder for the infirmary remodel project at the Law Enforcement Center. So this is the contract. We'd ask for your permission to have the chairman sign. We will come back to you with the GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price Number, uh, once we get that from them.
Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, what are the wishes?
Move to approve the J E Dunn contract.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried.
Right, just one other update for you. Way back in time, there were discussions about the joint library. So the city of Williston and Williams County have a joint library board. And that means that our public library dollars and efforts go into one central place. So that is the library that we all know exists in Williston. But there had been over the years, some confusion about the bookmobile, whether that was autonomously owned and operated by Williams County or the library or how it all worked. Three or four years ago, we went through a, a rewriting of a joint powers agreement, so we sorted all of that out. And each year, the library is now putting aside some money that they use for maintenance of the bookmobile and future purchases. But we had a bookmobile that needed to be replaced at the moment, and I think this is in twenty-twenty-two, that we allocate money to help with the purchase of a new bookmobile to s- just get us, you know, sort of, uh, start off on the right foot. And then we have in the JPA this arrangement where we're saving money for the future, for the purchase of a future bookmobile. So I'm excited to tell you that we've, we've held money for the bookmobile since twenty-twenty-two and the new bookmobile has arrived. I believe that you all received some kind of an invitation or information that, that they are doing a, I guess, ribbon cutting or whatever it would be this Friday, I think. Is that right? And so I, I just want you all to know that we are paying for a majority of the bookmobile this time. It's really a one-time stopgap to get us now to, uh, to a cycle where the library will be able to make the purchase every, I think, four or five years is the intended lifespan of a bookmobile. And so you will see that purchase come through. We're actually paying the full bill to the bookmobile company. And then the Library Foundation has collected some additional donations or has additional money. We'll bill them the difference. It just helps the vendor to get one payment. And so know that, uh, we've been working on this a long time and it's happened. And I haven't seen the bookmobile in person yet, but I've seen pictures online and, boy, it looks great. Uh, I understand there was a local graphic designer who designed the, the wrap that's on the outside. And so you'll see that it's, it's very representative of Williams County too, so.
It's at ten o'clock on Friday at the Community Library.
Great, yep. And, and the bookmobile goes out to, to all sorts of places in the county. And, and some of that includes daycares. When my, when my kids were little here in town, the bookmobile showed up once a month and the kids all scampered out to daycare and went and got books. And so travels throughout the county. On the, on the library website, I think you can see the schedule and see where it's going in town and, and out of town.
Okay, very good.
Have for you unless you have anything for me.
Okay, everybody good? All right, we are officially adjourned. Eight forty-two.